Dan, are you having Zoom issues?
I thought I got it. I can't leave the meeting.
Yeah.
Relax.
Well.
We're all good? All right, Smithville Board of Alderman Work Session is now called to order. Alderman Yulidal may be late or not making it at all tonight. First thing on the agenda is the neighborhood grants. Ms. Mitchell, this one's yours. Ready?
I am. Thank you. So during the 2122 budget discussion this year, the board directed staff to budget for the, a neighborhood beautification grant program. Through the budget discussion, $25,000 was approved in this year's budget. And staff went to work researching different programs, making sure that we give you enough options as far as what to decide moving forward. The purpose of this program is to assist neighborhoods in beautification type programs. And these are in public spaces. They're not to be used for one or a small group of individuals or homes. They're for public spaces and several other areas within neighborhoods. So what you have in the packet is a draft policy, which includes details of the proposed program. And I've also included a list of comparable programs. A couple of those programs, they're not necessarily beautification programs, but they're similar programs where the city has given out grants to other organizations. So that was helpful as far as looking at different types of ranges, different types of match percentages. So that was good information on that front, as well as required information, forms, that kind of stuff. So what I'll do is I'll go through the different parts of the program, the different details. And what we are asking of you is four different types of decisions that will help form the policy. So what we need from you is a specific range of funds that will be allowed to be awarded to any organization. So right now I have $50 to $25,000. So you can make that $250 to $10,000. You can keep it at the, it's at, you can keep it at a certain amount. That is up to you. We're looking for a percentage of the required match. So this is the money that the organization that is applying for the grant, the percent of the total project funds, what they are willing to put toward the project. In my research, I found anywhere from 25 to 50% is the norm. So that would be a decision from all of you. And then also eligible projects and eligible entities. As far as entities, right now I just have it as HOAs and neighborhood associations. But as you all know, Smithville has several, or several neighborhoods that don't have HOAs or neighborhood associations. So that would be a decision on your part as well. Any questions before I get into the details? So I'll start at funding. Like I said, in the 2122 budget, $25,000 was approved. So we are able to grant as many grants as we can, up to $25,000. And so the first question I would want to pose to all of you is, is the current range something that you want to keep, or is there a range that you would like to narrow it down to?
Alderman Atkins?
I would hate to see one organization get all the funds. So how many different organizations, communities, HOAs, do you think that will apply for this?
So we currently have nine HOAs. So those are organized HOAs in Smithville. And so we could split it up depending on the estimation that nine different organizations are going to apply to these, but these are funds that could be, depending on board decision, available on an annual basis. So it's not like it's a one and done. If you don't get your project approved this year, it could go forward again for next year.
Yeah, one of the things I was going to ask about is should we set a date of everything in by February 1st? We consider and then whatever's left after that. So that way people gets up in, but if there's a project that's expensive, you know, that is a good community benefit and no one else applies, I think it's fine that one organization gets it all. We said, you know, a date and like, on a set, there's, there's nine. So it'd be pretty easy to reach out to all of them and say, hey, the money is available, which I know some of them already know it's available because they've already asked me about it. They already said, hey, these are the projects we're thinking about. I think we give them up to a date to get them all submitted. So the, the committee that's looking at these can, can weigh them and decide on it. But I don't think I want to, I don't think we need to have a hard ceiling other than the budgeted amount on it. That's, yeah, Mar, I agree with you that, that we don't want every year to say, you know, every one organization gets all the money, right? We, we want to have some guidelines in there and then they're going to be reviewed and things like that, which is later in the policy. But if we put a $10,000 limit on it and somebody wants to do a, you know, $100,000 project and they're asking for 25, you know, that could be a big impact for that area town.
Yeah, we currently do have a deadline of March 31st. But we could put a phased approach in. So we could do like a first come, first serve or a first round is.
Yeah, I think the first round, March 31st is fine. And then if there's not enough and we have money after that, then we look at, you know, or we carry it over to the.
Yeah.
I think the first year is going to be a game changer for everybody to understand and realize, hey, this is available to us.
Yeah, I know. Your subdivision does have an HOA, right? They, they probably have a laundry list of projects that I've been thinking about too, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Alderman Hartman, say your hand up.
Yeah, Mayor, question for, it said neighborhood or homeowner association. So neighborhoods, what would be the qualification for that?
So that is something that is a question to you all. So a neighborhood, we have several non-organized neighborhoods in Smithville. So one of the, there's a couple of things that put bumps in the road for non-organized ones is, one, when we do reimbursements, it's, we're probably going to be reimbursing to one individual rather than an organization. And two, there's not necessarily an organized group of the neighborhood to say, overall, we all want this one project to happen. So my thought for non-organized neighborhoods is that they go around with a petition and get signatures and a certain percentage of the neighborhood to vote yes or say yes that they would like this improvement to happen. We can move forward in that way. But those are my only, the only two things that differentiate those two that would impact this.
I appreciate, I think we do need to have an application process and a, and a decision made, obviously at the city level, but I don't want to bog this down either and discourage someone to go, gosh, I've got a 15-page questionnaire and a presentation.
It's not going to be that long.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we streamline it.
Oh, no.
We still qualify and quantify, but I don't want to make this a really heavy burdensome process.
No, what I'm, what I'm envisioning is it's probably going to be a two-page application with supplemental attachments, approvals from any people who either own the property or from the city, if it's in right of way, volunteer pledge form for in-kind match. If anything, it'll be top five to seven pages depending on the project. If someone really wants to go into extreme depths in the project, that's up to them as far as how long it's going to be.
I think I had to submit more paperwork to my HOA for retaining all than that. So I don't think that's too cumbersome.
Yeah. And we don't want to bog down the people looking at it too. So we want to make sure it's, it's simplified.
Alderman Chevler?
Yeah, so to get, to get back to the original question about, you know, the amounts, I mean, I, I think I'm with you on that. If there's this home run type project, right, where it's just a really, really big thing and it makes sense, you know, that, that might be something we look at. But I still, I still struggle with, with that though, in that if just one group, say they want to do the entire 25,000, you know, does that mean that the next year that they'll be ineligible for additional funds? Or how does that work to make sure that others have a chance to apply?
That's the type of feedback she's asking for. I think we could definitely put that in the policy that says, you know, based on, you know, if you receive a grant one year, then you're moved to the bottom of the rankings the next year, or you're not eligible again for three years, or however you want to phrase it.
Yeah, currently what we have is one organization can submit one application per year. But we can say that if you were awarded a grant one year, you can't do it again for X many years. If we're going to go that way, I'm going to need an amount from you all on that as far as decision. So two, three years or every other year or anything like that?
Or do we want to say that an organization can receive a maximum of $25,000 in?
That's what I was going to say. Because just say five people apply and we divide the money up five ways. They're only going to get, you know, 6,000, 5,000 apiece. I think they should be allowed to apply again for the next year if it's a small amount. The full amount I think should be every other year.
Yeah, I just say that any organization is eligible for up to $25,000 every three years. So if they get the full amount, then they're not eligible the next two.
And we don't have to grant every year.
Right.
Requested amount.
Right.
Right, that's another part. I mean, we request a certain amount of money. We could say, because of the amount of applications we received, we'll give you 75% of what you asked.
Yeah, and if we look at the, and if we look at the other cities, yeah, and I think we decided on 25,000 the first year to try this thing. And, and in other cities, they do budget more. So if it is successful and we get a bunch of applicants and we look at the projects and say, hey, the, these things might be great to do next year. We could look at adding more money to the grant pool too.
And keeping the cap at 25?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alderman Chevler?
So would anyone entertain possibly setting a, the in-kind and the financial percent that the organization want to donate based on the amount that they receive? Like if it's a higher amount that they should be kicking in more money? Or in service?
Do you mean like a tiered?
Yeah, yeah, like we start out at 25% contribution for like up to like maybe, I don't know, 5,000. And then higher than that, then they need to start kicking in more money.
Say 50% all across the board.
What'd you say, Marv? You cut out 50?
Yeah, 50% all across the board.
I agree. I like the 50% across the board. I think it's going to get too complicated if we start doing these different tiers and.
So I know we have a few people on this call that have served on their HOA boards as well. I mean, financially, I don't think that's too much of a burden to ask of an HOA, is it? If they're going to do a project anyway?
I mean, it can in some years, right? I mean, it just kind of depends on what, what the budgets look like. But I mean, for the most part, if it's 50% of 25,000, I mean, I think most should probably be able to cover that.
If you're going to do that big capital project anyway, or you wanted to, right? It's on the wish list.
Yeah.
It just helps accelerate the project more than really supplementing it, right? Alderman Sarver, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say that, you know, most, now, the HOA board I was involved with didn't have much money. So I would probably shot more for 25% because they wouldn't be, probably wouldn't be doing this project if they didn't get a grant. You know, they wouldn't have the money. They might have it, but I'm not sure they'd have 50%.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't just have to be money, right? I mean, they can, they can do like some sort of community service. Yeah.
Right, correct. Yep. So volunteer hours are valued at $20 an hour. So how they would do that is they would fill out a volunteer pledge form. So that way we could calculate how many hours times 20, and that would be an in-kind. And they can combine that with cash as well.
Yeah, and with that stipulation, I think 50% is reasonable.
Can I jump in just for a second and clarify that 50% of the total project cost is the language that we have in here? Wanting to make sure 50% grant match, 50% of amount requested. If we pull something down, it's amount, 50% of the total awarded, correct? I see head.
Oh, I say yes, sorry.
50%.
I just want to make sure we all understand that language.
I would say what's awarded.
I concur.
So you're saying 50% on the in-kind?
For the amount that was awarded.
Yeah, okay. So, so like, it, so just for simple math, if HOA has a project that's $10,000, the grant's five, and they can do $2,500 worth of it as in-kind. So we'd be, they'd be out of pocket $2,500 cash. I think that, I think that's reasonable if somebody's doing a $10,000 project in their HOA and we're giving, you know, they have five of their own cash and then we're handing them another five and, or they're, I mean, they're working through the other part. So, yeah.
So current language is the required match must be equal to the certain percentage of the total project cost. So if my project costs $10,000, I'm going to request, for if we do a 50% match, I'm going to request 5,000 from the city and the HOA is going to kick in 5,000.
Or 2,500 plus 2,500 in labor.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would be worried about the project cost. I would rather look at the project amount that was awarded.
Grant amount, amount granted.
Yeah, that's how I was seeing it. Like if we, if we gave 10,000, then we would require $5,000, $5,000 for, for the, the folks to, to kick in for the project, right? Is that what you're thinking, Marv?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make sure that that language is updated then.
Yeah, so technically they would be able to do a project for 15, right? 15,000 and then they get 10,000 from the city, 5,000 on their own. But it's 50% of what the award is that they've been granted.
I don't think that's what you meant. If you're, if you're rewarded 10,000, you're going to put in 5,000 and the city's going to put in 5,000, correct?
Exactly.
Not going to be another 5,000.
Right.
Right.
If you're, if you request 10,000 and the city's only going to give you 5,000, then you have to put in 2,500 and the city will put in 2,500, right?
Exactly.
Yeah, I'm, I guess I'm not so sure on that. Yeah, I, I, I thought that, okay, so let's say an HOA gets together, right? And they, they spec out a project. A 15, let's just say 15,000 to make it easy, right? Their project is 15,000. They're going to ask the city for 10,000, right? And then they're going to kick in, they're, they're going to kick in the 5,000. Is that, isn't that how this is supposed to work?
Well, but.
Because they're getting 10,000 from the city and then they're going to match that 5,000 with their own. So they can technically go to 15. I thought that's how, I thought that's how grants worked.
Granted, typically you have the total amount and your percentage is a percentage of that total. So if you're talking 15,000, a 50% match would be 7,500.
And then you'd have to put in half of that 7,500.
Right.
Right. So like for our trail, the match was 20%. So whatever we spent, they gave us 20, they reimbursed us 20%. So and so if it's a $15,000 project and we say we're going to match 50%, they get 7,500. And that's the, the rest of their project they could work in. So if it's a sign landscaping project, right, and they're going to supplement some of the labor with their own people, they're not paying the whole thing in cash.
But if it's a project that they can't supplement, then they're going to get half of, right?
Right, yeah, they're going to get 7,500 from us no matter what. The way they spend the other 7,500 is on that. They have to match the 7,500 with either cash, cash and labor or common, you know, there has to be a combination or, or just straight cash. Either way, they have to match the 7,500. On a $15,000 project, they have to match 7,500.
Fair?
Yes, sir.
I would suggest that if we do grant the 50%, that it must be used for what they signed up or applied for.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So the actual items, not the volunteer in-kind.
Right.
Yeah.
Total combined.
Right, so they have to submit a bid sheet and say, you know, it's $10,000 in materials and we plan on doing $5,000 worth of labor or whatever it is.
Okay.
Is everybody good with 8% then? Everybody's nodding. It seems like that's good. Is everybody good with not having a ceiling on it? And we, we wait till that date that we take all the projects, they review them and award them on some sort of rating system? Okay?
Yes.
As I see, this, I know there's at least one, two, three, four of you that are in HOAs. Dan's the lone one.
Yes, I am.
Ward one continues to not have HOAs. Well, no, wait, now you do have one, right? You guys have Greyhawk now, right?
Is Greyhawk part of?
And, and new, and new Harborview.
Yes, I guess we would have.
Yeah, yeah, you guys have HOA neighborhoods now.
Darn it.
Okay.
Great.
Do you have everything you need?
Uh, nope, not yet. So next is eligibility requirements. So we talked about HOAs, neighborhoods. So right now the policy, the draft policy is that funds can only be given to an organized neighborhood. The Smithville not have, or the Smithville having several unorganized neighborhoods. Is that something that you would like to open up to? All neighborhoods within Smithville and then require some additional paperwork that would kind of go in the place of what an HOA does. So a general consensus, everyone, majority agree. That kind of thing. What are your thoughts on?
Alderman Hartman first, since you're the only one who doesn't live in an HOA. What is your thoughts?
Again, I don't want to make it burdensome, but I do think that since it's not an organized HOA, it would have to be some kind of consensus. But, and I don't know what that is because it's so hard to know what's population around.
And who would pay for it? Who would pay the 50% match?
That, that was my, my, that was my feedback was who do we write the check to, right? Like, at the end of the.
They have to come up with money.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that's the, that was kind of my question is, and then how do we define that neighborhood, right? Like, there's so, like, if you look at downtown in Jackson, like Ronnie Majors or Clayton just built the house by the trail, that's a two-lot subdivision. That, that's not a lot of people, right? There's two people to make that decision on that little sub. And then there's a lot of those little subdivided areas throughout downtown. So, so we just say, you know, from Maine to come to hospital, Maine to hospital drive is an area, you know, then do you have to go get 60%? I think in an HOA to change anything, it's 60%, right? Most of you are, the, no, Sarver, you might know better than.
I think it's more than that. I think it's like 80, like 80%.
Yeah, depends on the documents. I mean, the rolling, I think it's 50% plus one, so.
50% plus one.
Of people that vote.
Okay, so then you have to define that area and then you got to figure out who's paying for it and who's getting reimbursed and. I mean, honestly, for, for the downtown area, we've done a lot of beautification projects. I don't know what else they would want. It might be something we discussed for like streetscape and then, you know, we could talk to places, the other neighborhood, I know Diamond Crest and Wildflower too, up north that are not HOA subdivisions. Maybe that's something we could research and see if they even have any interest in it.
Well, they, they can also, they can also start their own like neighborhood activist, I don't know what word I'm supposed to be using here, but they can start their own like groups, right? I mean, and then they can fundraise on their own and stuff too. I mean, if, if one of them chooses to do that, obviously I don't think they're going to have time for this, this go around. But I mean, they always have the option later on to come up with something.
Or if they wanted to work together with like a nonprofit, like the Lions Club and go or Rotary, right? Those are recognized groups, right?
Yeah, that's another question is to ask if you want to include nonprofits as well.
Alderman Atkins?
Maybe an organization that maybe that doesn't have an HOA recruit 50 houses a minimum, that's just a number throughout.
That's, Jack, you would know the number, what's the number of houses in like Diamond Crest or Wildflowers, around 200?
Diamond Crest, no, it's not, it doesn't reach 200. I'd say it's probably 145, 150. Wildflower right now is probably close to 200.
But we both recognize, or all of us recognize both of the divisions as an organization.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's still, it's the money. I mean, it's, who's to control the money? And if they can come together and create some sort of a group, you know, at, at least that's the identity that they can, they can present to us as, hey, this is a group.
That would be on that group.
Yeah, so, so Anna, I think you have your answer. Just leave it as HOAs and neighborhood groups for now. And, you know, we can revisit it if we get up some groups that come forward that aren't organized and registered and cross that bridge, you know, maybe it's something we talked about at the board retreat because by that time we'll have people turn stuff in and, you know, we can rediscover it then.
Great. And then the last thing I have is the list of eligible projects. So we've got several listed here, landscaping trees, signage improvements that benefit the neighborhood, community gardens, neighborhood cleanups, curb appeal enhancements for existing property. Is there anything on there that you want to take off, anything you want to put back on? We're trying to go toward more permanent items, but also projects that help clean up and restore the area, like the cleanup days, that kind of thing. Any other ideas?
I'm good with that list because I mean, neighborhood improvements, like trails.
Good start.
One of that, right? So, or if they want to do water bottle fillers like we did on the trails, like those are permanent, more permanent type improvements, right? So.
Anything that benefits the community.
Yeah. Okay. And then the last part is selection process. Those items will have a point value to them. So then it will be a little bit easier to select who would or wouldn't get any funds that year. Depending on the amount of applications coming through. Any funds would be given in the form of reimbursement of actual receipts. And then application deadlines, application would open January 1, the end, it would end March 31. So then those grant funds that are available for any spring projects. That is all I've got. Any other questions?
Bonus points for, bonus points for no spelling errors.
I pride myself on that.
Well, in the applications as well.
Great. All right. Thank you.
All right. Everybody good? Going once, going twice, moving on to the next agenda item. Discuss, discussion of COVID response. Ms. Wagner, this one is yours. Take it away.
I just wanted to provide an update to the board on items that we continue to implement and some follow-up on some direction from the board from a prior meeting. At the meeting on October 19th, the board approved a policy that changed our COVID leave time to allow basically reinstate COVID sick leave for those employees who are vaccinated. That effect, that policy became effective on October 22nd. And that provides a total of 14 days paid leave for employees who've been vaccinated, who've begun the vaccination process by receiving at least one shot or previously been granted a reasonable accommodation. Those are 14 days total over, that's not every single time they would have an exposure, but 14 days. We do follow, 14 days total, excuse me, we do follow CDC guidelines. So if an employee is exposed and is vaccinated. So if an employee is exposed and is vaccinated, but not showing symptoms, so long as they are masked, they may remain at work. An unvaccinated employee is required to, if they've been exposed, they are required to quarantine um, for fourteen days or ten days if tested after day, between state, between days five and seven. So, an unvaccinated employee will have a minimum of ten days out, a maximum of fourteen days out. A vaccinated employee, once, if they become symptomatic, um, would need to, uh, quarantine. And we do also, per CDC guidelines, require vaccinated employees and unvaccinated employees both to test. So jumping ahead a little bit, just to give you some information, um, last week, we had, um, an exposure in one of our divisions. It's a division, division of seven employees. Um, three of those employees are vaccinated, four are not. One vaccinated employee actually was positive, tested positive. Um, he is home on leave and is applying for utilization of this, use of this policy. So he's eligible for up to fourteen days for that. He may return to work once he is non-symptomatic or past fourteen days per CDC guidelines. The other employees, two of them were vaccinated, so they remained at work masked. The others did, um, have to stay home and quarantine. And all employees were tested between days five and seven of exposure. At the time this memo was put together last week, uh, we had two additional employees that had tested positive. We since have had another, yeah, what, I'm sorry, Anna, I've, okay, hold on, I have to look. We've, we've had a couple more tests positive, so four are currently positive. Two are vaccinated, two are unvaccinated, um, one actually is having, suffering pretty severe symptoms. Um, two employees are negative, and one employee is awaiting test results. As noted in this memo, um, we, it, through talking with people and making a determination with regard to risk exposure, while we are requiring masking, which is discussed in this memo as well, this was not always a procedure that was followed in that division. That's why people were, um, requested to quarantine, because they did have an exposure, uh, of more than fifteen minutes cumulative over a twenty-four hour period of the positive individual. Um, so we've asked those, all individuals were required to be treated as if they had had an exposure. Um, as of, I double-checked again on the CDC website today, Clay County is still listed as an area of substantial transmission. So we follow the CDC guidelines as we have been, and require masks indoors when employees are not able to keep uh, at least six feet apart. So if, if an employee is sitting at their own workstation, um, and not moving around, and there are no others around, they, they aren't masked. Up and around, they are typically in meetings, we do. We are not, we do not have it posted currently that the public is required to mask, although, um, depending upon the meetings and situations, we have asked people to, to wear masks. We currently are limiting the number of meetings we have in person. Uh, when we do have meetings in person, we do try to ask people to mask more. The requirement of not asking people to mask when they come in and pay bills has been more the, the policy. Um, we do strongly can urge virtual meetings, and as you all are aware, we've been doing these meetings, um, virtually since the beginning of the pandemic. Um, I think that that covers where we are. Um, just kind of wanted to provide you an update on that, and I know, um, the very last bullet we talked about is public meetings at this time. Um, all boards and commissions are meeting, uh, online, but we have indicated that the next meeting for the EDC would be held in person. And we anticipate some discussion with regard to this meeting, and Mayor, I would then leave it to you for any additional discussion on that.
Yeah, and my only comment to EDC is they were asking to have an in-person meeting, and I said, you know, they meet quarterly. I think you guys are starting to meet monthly, though. I said, if, you know, if that's, if that's what the members of that board want to do, and if staff is okay with them meeting in person, but, you know, there's not a lot of public attendance to those meetings. Um, I don't see why they can't, but I think we should still make sure we offer the Zoom option for those that don't want to be in the room, or can't be in the room. So, um, and with, with this meeting as well, I I've said till the end of the year, I still stand by that on this meeting. If you all want to discuss meeting in person again after the first of the year, I'm open to that as well. Uh, I know we're getting a holiday season and family time and travel, and the last thing I want is for, you know, somebody on this board to have to feel like they need to be in the room, and, and then we get exposed, and, and we have to quarantine and not see family for the holidays. So, um, I think we still need to continue to keep an eye on the numbers in Clay County before we completely pull the trigger for the board meeting in person. I think if we have a few people in the room, and we're distanced, and we have a hybrid option available, I think that's acceptable to it in January, February, if the numbers are, are where they need to be. Um, and I'm pretty sure, from talking to most of you, a lot, most of the board is vaccinated. Um, and some of you have already had your boosters. So, um, again, we're all adults, and, and we can talk through that kind of stuff. I'd like to know your all's thoughts. First thing is, um, I, I know Alderman Atkins, you had brought this up, um, at the work session. Um, I know Alderman Hartman, you had had some comments as well. Um, is there anyone right now that wants, uh, staff to look into changing the policy for employees? Are we good with where it is?
I stand corrected.
Thank you, Alderman Atkins.
Mayor, I, I stand, um, with the policy as well. Um, one thing I'd like to, it, I don't know how you regulate it, but for those who have been positive through a PCR test, through their doctor, or through a authorized test, I, I think that changes a little bit then for them, because of, again, I'm not an expert here, so I don't want to speak, but my understanding of antibodies and being able to, um, go about their business. Um, but yeah, I don't know if we necessarily want to change any of the existing policies. I just think for those who have been positive and have quarantined and gone through various symptoms, I, I think we should treat it similar to a vaccinated employee. That's, that's my only comment.
Yeah, I think that gets into some HIPAA problems also, if we try to keep track of all that stuff, and if they've been immediately for a certain amount of days, and think, so, so Cynthia, it sounds like, keep the policy as is.
Right, if I can clarify also, I might just indicate, we've tried to follow CDC guidelines. And so far, if I'm aware and looking at that, CDC doesn't outline anything with regard to antibody information. So that makes it harder to be able to, to, to deal with her, or, um, and I always say prove isn't the right word, but substantiate, which is proof, but, um, yes.
And then, as far as committee meetings, uh, anyone have any strong feelings against, you know, EDC or Parks Board not meeting in person? Or at least having a hybrid option, if people want to be in the room. There's pretty small committees. Uh, the people that don't any, any strong feelings against keeping EDC or Parks Board or planning and zoning for meeting? Seen some head shakes now, okay. Uh, it's, so, so really, I'll leave that up to staff and the, the board members. Um, I know some of you serve on those boards. If you don't feel comfortable, we will make sure you can get on Zoom. Um, because I think that is a good alternative for, and we got to travel and other things that happen too, right? So, uh, what about this board is, I, I know we've got a month and a half before January, and things can change. Um, I think we should have the option to meet, and if some people want to be in the room in Jan-, on the first January meeting, um, if something changes dramatically between now and then, uh, you know, we'll pump the brakes on that. But I think if people are comfortable being in the room, we should at least try to do a hybrid meeting again, or leave it as an option. Anybody opposed to that?
I agree.
Okay. I've been, but, all right.
Well, one thing I, I would recommend, um, just from, from some of the things that I think Steve has had some issues hearing things. Um, when he, when he tried, we tried to do hybrid meetings before, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. Um, but if, if, if we are gonna do that, I mean, I, I'd like to maybe see if, you know, there can be some more simulations ran prior to the meeting to test everything out, a- and just make sure we're not gonna come up short again.
Absolutely, and Linda got us new microphones, and they're pretty awesome. So hopefully that'll help. We had a meeting with, uh, Clay County, and they could hear everything we're saying, so hopefully that helps.
I think you just have to be sure when you're in, in the meeting, you have to talk into the microphone. You can't back up and lay back and turn and talk despite the side. You have to focus on what you're doing. When they did that, I could hear everything fine.
Yeah.
And I think there were some times also early on, that, that was before we had the new microphones, and we also had some situations where there was some discussion, it was a little more informal in the board meeting room. And so there was some discussion, so there was a little bit of background sound as well. So we will definitely test it as staff and, and have that ready for January fourth.
And definitely, if you're online and you can't hear us yell at us and say, hey, quit, quit having sidebars and talking to your microphone. If we all just had headsets like John, we'd be good. Or Kelly with her AirPods. Okay, anything else for the COVID discussion? All right. Well, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the work session before we call the regular session order. Are we combined, Linda? Do we have to adjourn this one first? Okay.
Mayor, I'll second that. Second.
Question adjourned by Alderman Hartman. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Uh, we stand adjourned. Does anybody need a quick break? Nobody needs a two-minute bio? All right. I will call the Board of Aldermen meeting to order. I have seven eleven as the time. Uh, first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next item on the consent, on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, the new and improved Consent Agenda with extra items added to it that our clerk and city administrator really do appreciate. Alderman Chevler.
Thank you. I move to approve the new and improved Consent Agenda.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Alderman Atkins, seconds. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda? So our meetings were so long before, we had to make them more efficient and quicker. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. By the way, Alderman Yulidall is absent. He may join late, but his daughter's got to play tonight, so that is definitely more important than him being here when we have plenty of people. Uh, next item on the agenda is the Committee Reports. We had a Planning and Zoning meeting. Those are our items on the agenda for tonight. Alderman Chevler, what do you have to report?
I was just gonna, just gonna say, yeah, it was a pretty, pretty basic, uh, meeting, uh, everything that we discussed, you'll be talking, you'll be, um, looking at tonight, um, with this Richardson Street Plaza overlay.
Jack, do we have a date for Burger King yet?
No, sir. Soon.
Thank you. Next item is the City Administrator's Report. Ms. Wagner, do you have anything to add to your report?
Um, just wanted to make sure that you did see that the Direction Finder surveys will be distributed, uh, beginning the week of December first. So those will going out, uh, be going out, and so be on the lookout for those. A bit of an update on the trash and recycling, the, uh, senior trash discount applications. As of four o'clock today, we had three hundred twenty-nine applications for those senior discounts. And wanted to ensure that you did see in your agenda packet that we have updated the planning calendar to include twenty-twenty-two meetings. Um, there are a number of items included on there, some work session discussions that really focus on some comp plan and, um, goals for the governing body, as well as budget updates. And we've also tried to time, um, a number of the bids for projects included in the budget. So we're filling up the meetings for twenty-twenty-two, and that's including the planning calendar that's attached, linked to your, um, agenda. And that was all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Uh, just a couple of things to call out on that planning calendar. We will not have a meeting over spring break. And we will be moving the, uh, April fifth meeting to April fourth, because April fifth is an election day. Um, moving on. Next item on the agenda is the, is number six, bill number twenty-nine, twenty-four dash twenty-one. Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve bill number twenty-nine, twenty-four dash twenty-one, meeting section five-two-zero dot one-three-o, right-of-way maintenance, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Alderman Atkins?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Sarver?
Aye.
Alderman Kevilski?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Six zero.
Question carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance repealing and replacing section five-two-zero dot one-three-zero, maintenance of sidewalk area by a budding owner and occupant, and enacting in its place a new ordinance, section five-two-zero dot one-three-zero, maintenance of a right, of right-of-way by a budding owner or occupant.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number seven. Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for bill number two-nine-two-five dash twenty-one, Richardson Street Plaza Overlay District, first reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I think the, Matt, are you here for the applicant? Okay, Matt's here, if you guys have any questions. All right, no questions. Clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Yulidall?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Kevilski?
Aye.
Alderman Sarver?
Aye.
Six zero.
Question carries, Ms. Wagner, please read the bill.
An ordinance approving a conceptual zoning plan for the Richardson Street Plaza on certain lands located in the city of Smithville, Missouri, under the authority granted by the code ordinances of the city of Smithville, Missouri.
Next item on the agenda is number eight, Resolution nine ninety-seven. Alderman Hartman?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution nine ninety-seven, the emergency purchase.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving Resolution nine ninety-seven, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Question carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have any public comment? I haven't seen anyone on, okay. Uh, number ten is the appointment of Carrick Brown to the EDC. I appoint Carrick Brown to serve on the EDC. I think that gives you guys a full EDC now. Uh, clerk, please call roll.
Alderman Kevilski?
Aye.
Alderman Sarver?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall?
Aye.
Alderman Chevalier?
Aye.
Six zero.
Thank you. Carrick Brown is appointed to the EDC. Anna, you have all the people you need now, right?
Yes, thank you.
Cool. Any new business? All righty, uh, well, this is our last meeting before Turkey Day. So everybody have a great Thanksgiving. I know, uh, Alderman Yulidall will be cooking, uh, many, 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 many turkeys for people's Thanksgiving, so have fun with that, Dan. Uh, you have good weather for it right now, at least. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
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 All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.